Okay, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
If you could stand in place. We'll be on the same floor.
You should really move this chair up.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are you gonna turn me off? It's on the wrong side. We'll look on that. And if the council would, if they have not already, review the meeting minutes from last night's meeting?
What are you ready to do?
Yes, I am.
Does everyone have a chance to review them?
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone have any corrections or changes today?
I made a correction on page two where it says Marshall Dick was in the tent and he was not. Actually, Scott did report him. So the correction's already been made on my copy.
Okay. Any other changes? If there are none, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the 21st, 2019 meeting?
I make that motion. Have we approved the prior monthly list?
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Wonderful. Moving on to the fund report. Josh Lane, is there anything that stands out that we should know about?
No. Well, nothing that's bad.
I didn't see anything when I looked at it this afternoon, but... Any council comments or questions? If we have no comments or questions, we have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the fund report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And moving on to the payment of bills. Any questions, Councilor? If there are no comments or questions, we have a motion to approve the account payable registered for the month of May 2019.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Josh Lane, I see we have a little correspondence here.
Yes, if you'd like to read the letter from St. Stan's.
We'll do that one first and then...
I just had something to say.
It's from St. Stan's Los Casco Parish. Dear Town of Trail Creek council members and Marshall Dick, Sergeant Luskowski, and Jim Kaminsky from the Street Department, on behalf of the St. Stan's 5K Run and Walk Committee, I want to express my sincere appreciation for allowing us to have this race in the beautiful surroundings of Trail Creek. We wanted to thank the Trail Creek Police Department, Marshall Dick, and Sergeant Eric Luskowski for keeping the course safe for the 112 participants who finished the run and walk. Once again, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to have the run and walk and ask for your support. With your continued support and approval, we hope to continue the run and walk in June of 2020 and ask for your continued support. Very truly yours, Patrick Crayler, who is the Run Director for St. Stan's Trail Creek 5K. Were there any issues that we need to come up with this year?
That was good.
Great usual.
Good.
Wonderful. And they gave us a member of the T-shirt, which Marshall Dick, I'm gonna pass along to you.
That's not my size.
Okay, well...
Yes, it is. It's exactly your size.
It's a two size. It is not my size. But it is a nice shirt and if you or one of your officers can use this, I wish I'd be happy to do that. Did you have a case in conjunction with this?
Yes, I received an email to the town hall, an email from Brent Bassett, and it says, "Josh Lane just wanted to drop a note to tell you, to say thank you to the Trail Creek Police Department for their increased trafficking efforts on Johnson Road. Keep up the good work," Brent Bassett.
Very nice. Read this one now?
That one does not, I just put that out there, but it does not have a...
It doesn't have a...
Doesn't have a name on it, so normally they don't have a name.
For informational purposes. Okay. Wonderful. So moving on to reports then. MS4, hello, please.
Hi. We didn't have a form today, so Rex's assistant, Arianna, was there and I signed each of her places. There's three pictures. She's trying to get an endless painting project started in the City of Newport.
Yes.
Yeah, there's three separate pictures. She has to appear before the Newport City Board of Public Works to get the approval. But she's gonna start her, her mom, I guess, are gonna do the painting and then she's gonna videotape the process and post it on Facebook page. These pictures are posted on the Facebook page and people have been voting on which one they like best. And she's had really good response. She's had over a thousand hits and it's gonna share on people's Facebook pages as well.
I've seen this before. It's really nice.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
What is the name of the company that you're talking about?
No, she's Rex's assistant.
So is there a name for the project or...
Not, not yet.
Not yet?
No.
And they're just doing this over storm drains to make sure that people keep everything clean?
Because several years ago, we had a little stick-on placards with fish on it, but they lasted like about two years. And there's a special kind of paint she's still gathering to try to find out where she can get it. You know, they'll probably have to be touched up as they show over time, but...
But that's a great idea.
Yeah.
This is true.
Yeah. The fish is probably...
That was a lot of attention.
That one and the fish are probably the most popular ones so far, the one we posted. So do you want to...
I like this.
Yeah, I do too, because it's just straightforward.
They all have their own...
Website for it.
Is it the MS4 website?
Yeah, it's the LaCorte County MS4 on Facebook. That's what it's called. And I suggest, because we have that big Shirley Wayne erosion project coming up on Nine Lake right there, that quass, and then cleaning out that moat and refurbishing it. And I'd like to suggest too, we probably should do video to post on Facebook for that as well, because that's a pretty, that's gonna be a pretty big project.
That's gonna be a really big project, for sure.
Because I guess the erosion is so bad, it just drops straight down. Now you can't walk out.
No, there's, there's almost no beach left.
Yeah. So that's all I have for tonight. Oh, one more thing. There's about $80,000 in the non-reverting fund for the capital projects. So I guess you just have to decide, you know, what you would like to approach Rick with and have a meeting with him on what can be done.
Okay.
That's all I have for tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our attorney is not here. Did he send any reports or information?
Just the state code on building permits, which you guys basically already approved. So he'd just like to get your signature tonight and an approval.
Okay.
Do you want to read through that? Stand by.
So I'm sorry, do you want me to read through the entire?
No, you guys have already, we've already talked about this. It was just a matter of getting it for you with the revisions and...
Ordinance 6-2019, regulating the construction alteration, equipment use, occupancy, and location of buildings and structures in the town of Trail Creek, incorporating by reference building rules, codes, and standards to be enforced under IC 36-7-2-9, provide for the issuance of permits, inspections, and penalties or fees for violations. So this is the one we have it over. We need a motion to approve this ordinance. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 6-2019?
How many promotions do you approve? Who's drawn up our attorney's?
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So this will sign. I'll see if I can as well. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll pass that on.
Mr. Crayler?
Okay. On June 13th, we opened bids for the 2019 payment program. We've received one bid from Reeve Riley Incorporated. And the bids received for the various contract division. Contract Division A, Laurel Drive, $57,070. Contract B, Spruce Drive, $55,705. Division C, Pinecone Drive, $14,426. And Edgemore Drive, $75,750. Now those projects are basically mill and pave. Little drainage work and so forth, but those are mill and paved. Contract Division E, Market Drive, $161,950. That is a complete reconstruction. So we have total for all these divisions, $364,901. And we've gone through the paperwork that's submitted by the contractor and I would recommend that they be awarded the projects.
Josh Lane, that money's coming out of...
This was from the...
They grant?
Yes.
Okay.
We will owe 10%.
So we will owe...
Or, I'm sorry, 25%.
We owe 25% of it?
It's 25%.
Correct. So that's gonna be about $80,000? $80,000 we owe them.
You expected it.
We're good on that.
We expected it, yes.
Yeah, we're good on that, aren't we?
We are.
Okay.
It's gonna come out of Rick about where it's, our street practice has been going.
Right.
We need a motion to accept...
We do need a motion to accept the bids and to, or to accept the contract, I should say, and to begin work. Correct?
Has Bill reviewed the contract?
Has Bill reviewed the contract, has he not?
Reeve Riley, does he normally review?
I really, I don't think he does, but I really don't know.
Usually John does that.
But...
You're comfortable with saying everything is in compliance?
Yeah.
And that the materials used will not come out of Newport plants?
Yeah. Well, we'll...
So we shouldn't have concerns there?
You should not be concerned.
Okay.
And just an FYI, I did contact Indot as far as the issue with Reeve Riley in there right now continuing to allow Reeve Riley as part of the, thank you, grant work.
Oh, they're good, aye.
They were the only company that submitted bids?
Yes.
This time? Well, she probably indicated that they got confused about the time for the mandatory meeting. They operate on stop bend time and something happened and they did not have a representative here, so they've been running low.
So do we have a motion to accept the contract from Reeve Riley?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept Reeve Riley, Contract Division A, B, C, D, and E, for a total price of $364,901.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
John, did they give us a time schedule?
Well, we'll, I believe we established this at 45 days.
Right.
That would be from the date of the notice of award signed. And that's my next question. I have a notice of award that I can, at your direction, I can sign this and give it to the contractor and get the dates established for notice to proceed. That's when the time will begin to count. And also, I have a form of contract for your signature, I guess. There seems to be some confusion between Josh Lane and the lady from Pot Park is doing. We need to have this all in, so we're trying to get...
The lady from Pot Park needs to call Indot because I am, I know for sure that it's July 1st.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, we're set up that this, that they need to bring this back within seven days.
Okay.
So we should be able to get it all signed up and get it into...
You're waiting for Pot to turn them all on at the same time, is that what? What are we waiting for on Pot to pay?
It was just...
Just to make sure that everything was, was ready. Both, both towns wanted to make sure that we were on the same page, I think.
Okay, yeah, but I'm...
So, but work on it and making sure that it's in by the first.
Right, right. I mean, I wouldn't wait for them if they don't have their stuff.
No, we're, we're gonna go ahead and proceed, so... John, can we send those after the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Anything else that we have?
We finished, I believe we finished previewing the Pot Park rented drive this afternoon, contractor. So that completes that project with the exception of cleaning up and some landscaping work. So that's done. We had a change to your approval for the change order last month of $14,000. We're gonna put some sand in. We took an extra foot out underneath the base because of soft soil. I switched it over to basically balanced for rock and it's fine. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to worry about any part of that.
So, so we won't have an additional cost?
You'll have the additional cost.
Okay.
The contractor, rather than this, I'll say he threw in the stone rather than the sand that we were gonna use. So we're gonna hit the same rights.
Be more stable and...
It's, they got a good job out of it, the finding.
Okay, good.
But the soil was very bad. That's finished. Had a call from, you know, Crawford, he has a business at the corner of Michigan Boulevard and Chapala Parkway. And he's been calling over the years regarding water that basically runs up to Michigan Boulevard and has no, no way of getting out. So we need to look at trying to put some kind of a drain in there. There is a, there is a drain along the highway that we can poke into. I have to talk to Michigan City about that aspect of it, but we need, we need to try to do something for it.
Is it the Chapala and Michigan Boulevard?
Mm-hmm. Southeast corner.
Have you been over there? Did you see the water?
Oh, yeah. It's been, it's been a problem for several years, but it was, with all these rains, it was pretty bad this time.
Yeah, there's water everywhere, so...
So there is, there is a solution to it. But we, it's the same old bug. It's gonna take a little money.
Right. Okay. What else have you got?
I was hoping to talk to Jeff Bruder regarding the flood controls on our stormwater pump station. I think they're out of adjustment or someone has adjusted them improperly because they're, all they're doing is making a, they're cycling every couple of minutes really, and they only run for maybe 10 seconds at most, so maybe...
He's got the minimum, maximum set wrong.
Yeah. I need to, I don't know how they, you know, I don't know if someone changed them, but I need to talk to them about that.
Okay.
That's basically all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to reports. The Park Department, we don't have a report as of right now. I don't see any other representatives here, so move on to the Building Inspector. Oh, do we have a report? I'm sorry.
Can I say, I don't have an official report for them, but knowing that Dog Park is completing, I will get in touch with them to make a meeting because I noted that a member of the Park Board wanted to donate a tree and we also have to get with the Street Department to get the receptacles in and the picnic table signage.
Yes, yes.
And the signage. And I ordered the signage, but the gentleman who's cutting the signs went on vacation this week, so he's looking at the 30th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have nothing to report.
Still nice to see you. How about planning and zoning? Do we have anything from planning and zoning? No?
Can I talk in his spot? Would like to call Inspector.
We'll have you come in when we do public comment, if that's okay.
Okay.
What about the Police Department?
I can talk a lot.
How are we seeing?
I'm gonna have to, I'll do things today, so... Radar trailer has been deployed finally. I know it's been a concern. Keep in mind, it's, it's solar powered and the cloudy days we've had will not charge it. It's just gonna sit out there dead. It's not good for it. So days like this are perfect, so hopefully, you know, they're calling for some more stormy weather over the course of the next 10 days, but by the end of next week, they're calling for some nice heat. So right now, it's deployed as usual on Whippoorwill by the park, trying to make people accustomed to the fact that it is only 15 miles an hour past the park. We continue to get our training in. Last month, we had our range at Michigan, with Michigan City, at the Four County Range. It was a practice one for this month, but we actually get qualification. So we'll all be qualifying with our service departments next week, next week, last week in the month, 28th, 28th, I think. I know this was talked about before, about parking at the, our park, and there was some concerns about overnight parking, which is what I agreed with, but I think we need to take that one step further. I have concerns about people that actually live in the apartment buildings actually parking in there and possibly taking up spaces for personal use and not for dog park use. I didn't, they don't know what we can do about that, how we can limit that. But I think that's something we need to consider. We, we're gonna need something to keep them from parking there and use that as their private drive. I see it coming, so... John's looking at you like, um...
I'm not sure what the right answer is to that.
Yeah.
And maybe having signage that says that it's parking for park patrons only.
Right, park patrons only.
John, I think a really good point is that some people like to walk back there.
Right, see...
Well, park patrons...
If we do park patrons, that would cover everything for Pritz Park in general.
Sure.
Because you don't wanna make it just for the dog park. That park would have to be the entire park.
Right, no residential park, you know, whatever we can do, but I think we need to look into that and address that.
We'll have to see exactly how we wanna limit that, but that does need to be posted as a sign somewhere.
Absolutely, absolutely, especially the overnight parking.
Absolutely.
Because the parks do close at sunset, wouldn't sunrise. What other than, is anybody here, I don't know?
I have no questions for a lot, that was...
And nobody has questions for me, aye?
A new record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it and your continued support.
And I'm thinking no NUPC report this month, correct?
No NUPC report.
So moving on to old business, we have the Indot.
You missed the Street Department, though.
Oh, I did miss the Street Department. I was thinking Jeff's not here.
I just, he, I did touch base with him tonight. He did say that he is working on getting the patch from potholes. There's several potholes that still need to be dealt with. But because he can't get it here, he has to get it from Washington Kelly. So we opened him an account with Washington Kelly, so we're just waiting on their approval.
So what is he...
Rather than having to direct to Gary, is what he indicated.
What is he expecting then to start on those? Because that's been...
As soon as he gets the patch.
I mean, does he have any timeframe?
Hopefully.
Because people are asking, that's why I asked.
I know, yes, that's...
I've gotten calls.
He has to get the patch first.
All right, so we're waiting for a patch.
So we're waiting on him.
When you talk to him tomorrow, can you see if he can call them and ask them when they expect to have the patch? And when they expect him to start?
There's a crediting process that we have to go through whenever we buy things that were built for, so it takes a few days for that to happen. That stuff was faxed over to Washington Kelly yesterday. I expect to be approved by the end of the week, therefore, when Jeff returns next week, he'll get the patch and then, I'm sure he'll get it on their schedule.
Yeah, I just, I gotta, we gotta answer people too, citizens too, I mean...
We get the phone calls, trust me.
Early in the middle of next week?
Hopefully.
All right.
He is aware of it, so, and he did wanna mention that the shelter, Nelson Park Shelter, where the tree fell over the winter, the rip is not complete, so everything's done. Definitely knows it's done, it's fixed up. And that's it.
Some big trees.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so now, move on to old business. The Indot first bid, a call for first bid award or rejection?
We, we did that under the engineer.
Okay.
And the second call is on your new business.
Right, and that's for the new projects, correct?
That's for the new projects. Why do we need...
And we've done the state code already.
This is the second call for Indot?
No, the state code on building permits.
We did that.
That one's finished, but second call for, for projects. And John, that's you again, correct?
Well, we're working on revising that LTAP.
Asset.
Application, asset, asset application, so been working on that for the last couple of days. We just have to go back through it and line up all the streets again.
And that one's due when?
That, the second call opens for July.
Okay.
Where we're hoping to get our road roads, our roads that are road up at winter.
We have to, August 1st, I think, is the...
August 1st?
Opens in July, do August 1st?
By August 1st.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I know it's too many days.
That's a lot. Mr. Switzer will have public comments, so if you'll approach the podium and give us your name and address, then we can...
Well, my name's Jim Switzer. I'm a local inspector. So I do a lot of writing, a lot of reporting. And one thing I wanted to talk about was our ordinances. I know we don't have to call the board, sir. Maybe you should, our time, something. But I showed Jensen pictures and John, I don't know if Jen passed them wrong.
I have not yet.
But some of the pictures I got over there have a great class. We've got a few posts out there. They were put up a sign or something, because it's a thousand green glass, a sign. That's been laying there for a year. Don't come out. Either get that stuff out of there or put up the sign. I mean, that's ridiculous. You got another one behind Napa Auto. That sign's been laying behind there for months. You know, they should be getting the light.
The debris and the trash.
You go behind the furniture store, the furniture store, Josh told me that they've sent Uber's up to that furniture store. John, behind it, I got a picture, they've got six mattresses on the side there. Now we got all these ordinances and we're not enforcing them. So I think, you know, instead of writing six letters all the time, there should be a fine stipulation. Somebody comes in and complains about an ordinance. Josh Lane should only have to write one letter stating, "You got X amount of days to take care of it, or you will be fined."
Is this a Napa sign that you're referring to?
That's, that's, no, that's not. That's, that's a monthly note.
That's true, yeah, yes.
But she should only have to write one letter stating, "You got X amount of days to get rid of this problem. After that monthly note, you will be fined." And go back and check and see if they've done anything. If they haven't, just go find 30 days to pay it or turn it over to the attorney. You know, these people are starting to be a fine, it's because we're sending out letter surveys and in time, nothing's getting done. We got all these ordinances, so let's start enforcing them. It's money for the town. And besides that, I don't clean up how bad it looks.
Agreed.
You know, that's about all I got to say, is, you know, I'm just tired of taking pictures all the time. You just thought these are all the time and nothing's being done.
Do we need to...
Park was supposed to talk to these people. You talk to them, nothing's getting done, they're not getting fined, so they don't care if Josh sends a letter. So, they don't care if Josh sends a letter.
Our ordinances do allow us to penalize too. The whole issue here is there's so much going on that there's... It requires a lot of follow-up. And it would be nice if we could, when we sit down and have our preliminary budgeting hearings, to discuss having a code enforcer because Jim, he does it anyway. And we could really utilize that.
I'm going to go on top there real quick, too. I have had numerous conversations and I've given little pictures, and he is aware of this because I copy Josh and I know that he has spoken with Dr. Corwin. And he's been getting his permit to Evergreen Plaza. It was a trouble sometimes. Steve's had it with me a couple of times because they wouldn't even listen to me.
Anybody in there in respect to Jeff?
If you could tell us your name and if you could let us know who you are and the address that you have.
My name is Wally, Wally Pritz. We are the owner of a furniture store. And if you go by the back of there today, there's only one mattress. You can't bring a mattress in one day and have it out the same day because you're limited at how fast you can turn that stuff over. Generally, in a week, it's all cleaned up. Now, in regards to the sign that's in back of Napa, the only reason that sign's not up is because the state has not set where the drive is going to be placed. That's going to replace the two drives that they're going to close until those... Until that drive is located, we don't know where to put the sign.
Okay.
And while I'm on the subject of the center, I'd like to ask the town to find... Give me a date or something that will tell me when we're going to cut the grass. We get complaints about our stuff, but the town did not cut the grass in two years in back of every furniture store, and I would like to see it cut. And not only that, but that ditch has not been cleaned, and that is the obligation of the town to have to clean it.
Part of the issue, I know, with the ditch is the debris that's been dumped there from... And I know this has nothing to do with you, Mr. Pritz, but people who either are going behind Evergreen Plaza and dumping things there or some of the people who are tenants there inside of the plaza. We've had issues with people just dumping trash back there.
We respect that.
So, that's a safety issue for our workers as well. And I know that they've done the best they can this year with the weather being so damp, trying to keep up with, you know, the potholes and the roads erosion happened. The grass has had to be cut at other parts of the city. When they can get there, they're doing the best they can in that regard.
I respect that.
Yeah, the grass.
That strip center, the sizable monitae, I'm sure we can find enough money in that budget to cut the grass at least once or twice a year.
I know that they've cut it at least once last year because I was there not long after it was done because I wanted to make sure it happened. Now, as far as the ditch goes, I know that Jeff and I have talked about that, and that is on their list of things to do this year. But again, with all the water, they can't really get in there. So, they are doing the best they can. We actually bought a special mower just for that purpose.
Yeah, I would... Never mind. I don't want to get into no ass here.
We can talk after the meeting if you'd like to talk.
Thank you for that. Cut.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But then, like I said, you know, even though the liquor store, they got those two poles and they could have signed on, that's been a year now.
Right.
You know, sticking up, you know, they could have just cut them off, put a J-Box on, get rid of those posts because evidently there's problems getting that sign out, and that shouldn't be laying there a year.
It shouldn't be, but that's part of the indot project. And those are things that we... I don't think that we can do anything about right now.
They start the project and then they stop to do something else, and then everything's sat there. And you know, this project's been going on for a long time.
At least the signs for Evergreen Plaza.
Right. But they've taken them down because they had to with the project.
They were what, doing what's up?
Right. And they haven't.
Theoretically, they shouldn't.
Are we responsible for black copying by the malls? You know, if you turn off a pine tree going east towards Pritz Park, you've got two holes there that'll take a semi falling. You got the mall and then you got branches right behind the mall.
So, with the plaza, in regards to the plaza, anything that's there is actually private property?
Somebody should be calling, oh, there's two vehicles.
They are.
I drive back there, take the pictures all the time. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Switzer.
Would you answer these questions as our town guys have time to cut this grass?
It's not Mr. Pritz's grass. It's the ditch. It's the ditch behind the plaza.
No, he said the grass behind Evergreen Plaza.
It's the ditch.
It's part of the ditch.
The ground was saturated with water that they actually went back there and then they started to use the tractor.
Of course.
Just wait for it to dry out. And I get it. My yard's the same way. I get stuck in my little garter tractor in my backyard. It's just sad.
It's bad. There's not a lot we can do until it dries. Everything dries up.
So, we cannot cut it yet, not until it dries a little bit. So, we're hoping... I know that it's supposed to rain again tomorrow and then it'll open the weekend. Hopefully, early next week, it'll start to dry out a little more. So...
When it's dry, we cut.
Right.
That's a simple as that.
And they're going to dry.
I would not... With Bruder, we cannot risk a $20,000 piece of equipment buried.
Well, that and a worker.
And a worker possibly getting harmed.
So... But it will be addressed. So, thank you for bringing that up. Do we have any other public comment or moving on to council comment? Nothing?
Oh, I do have a comment. I do have a comment. So, I've been doing a lot of walking into town, and what I've noticed is there's a lot of spots on the road, real sticky garbage, like the garbage trucks going around, and they're emptying their liquid or something on the ground. So, I'd like the garbage man, maybe we can send a letter to them, and we can walk down here. There's spots that you can see where they stopped to crush their garbage, and it's all on the road. I'm sure it's them.
We've addressed them before.
Yeah. I talked to Steve on that, but I see it all through the whole town.
Is there a way that we can get that cleaned up? Or what have they told you when you've addressed that with it?
It's what they're calling garbage juice, which is just the... I know it sounds...
It smells and it's sticky.
It's just when people put liquids and things in their garbage when they crush it.
They composite it, pack it.
But I will. I will talk to them.
They're contained.
There's nothing they can do because I don't see other towns with that problem.
I will speak with them again. No problem.
One quick question. The house that's for me, you seen with the big dumpster there? Did they get a permit? I mean, what the heck is going on here?
When I tried to go down there and see if there was somebody there, all the cars were there by themselves.
You're speaking about how somebody...
Black Oak Drive is a big dumpster.
They didn't have some sort of flooding in there.
Yeah, they got a permit for the dumpster, and I know...
What did they give them?
Jim Switzer's been driving by the one on Black Oak.
Yeah. I haven't seen anything there yet.
Anything that required a permit.
Yeah, I called about that.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask a question about cars being parked by whom's. I see on Risky, off of Wellness, on Risky, there's like six or seven or eight cars parked, and it looks like they're working on these cars, but they're not parked on the driveway. Is there an ordinance for that, that they're not supposed to have that many cars?
Okay, we do not have an ordinance about the number of cars. Each car must be registered to the owner. All of those cars, with the exception of one, is registered. And we are in the middle of a blitz, and I just sent on a reminder... What's today? Today's Tuesday. So, it hadn't been Thursday of last week, and there was one of the houses. I don't know, I haven't seen any activity. There was one over here on Martin. I know that one. They addressed that. It's gone. The guys... We have the town invited up in three sections. Each officer has a section that they're responsible for. And then what I do is I just go around, and when I see them, I say, "Hey, what about this? What about this? What about this?" And they get on it. That one, he has not been hit with a gun yet. But he does fix them. It is... He buys them, puts it in his name, and fixes them and sells them.
There's not a lot.
They're in his name.
So, not a lot you can do there.
There's not a lot we can do except make sure that the one that does not have a plate gets registered.
Order parking legally.
And they are parked legally. Their parking's a rock driveway leading up to his garage. It does look horrible. I don't disagree with that. But remember, I operate within the rules that you guys set.
The only reason I'm asking is because someone I know had their car with a flat tire, and it was on the side of the garage, not on the driveway, and they got a warning and a ticket so that... And it was under... It was registered to his name.
I didn't get a ticket because we haven't written any tickets.
Well, it was a warning then.
Okay, yeah. A warning, yeah.
See, that's what I'm saying. But it was under his name. Why would he get a warning?
I don't know the specifics, I'm sorry. But if the car's on his property...
You'd have to look at... Look into it further.
Yeah. All we can do is look into it.
Because I didn't think they should do that either because I see a lot of cars that are sitting, you know, off of the driveways, you know? And I'm sure they don't go, you know, like yours. That's why I asked that question.
Sure. Basically, the easiest way to understand our ordinance on vehicles is you have to be able to drive down the street legally. It has to be plated, it has to be insured, and you have to run. A car with a flat tire, obviously, you cannot drive down the street legally. So, that's a violation of the town ordinance.
So, if ever happens again... I mean, hopefully, it won't happen again. But if it ever happens again, does he bring this to the office? Or does he bring it to...
Does he bring what?
The warning.
All he has to do is just fix it. We follow along.
Okay.
So, if we go by and we see the car's got a flat tire, they'll put a warning on it, and they'll follow up in several days. And we've been fortunate that we have not had to hope anything.
But then again, you're saying this person with the... All these cars parked there, and he's fixing them up and selling them. I mean, doesn't make, you know...
Yeah. We can't prove that they don't want us. If they're properly plated, they're plated in his name. But if they're plated in their...
But he's saying they can't see anything that says that they're not going to run. So, you don't have, like, major parts missing off of them or flat tires.
But see, I'm saying, wouldn't this person get, you know, then wouldn't he get a warning too because of...
That's a warning. That's what I just explained to that officer. They have to make contact with him. Because this isn't just... With this particular guy that you're talking about, this isn't we just slap. We need to go up there and have a conversation.
Okay.
And that's not just, you know, the one over here, you know, on Martin, it was just parked in the...
Yeah.
So, we go up and we take care of it. You know, put a sticker on it, it's gone. You know, once we point it out to them, they take care of it. So, we just need to have a conversation.
Because I've had neighbors, you know, talk to me that live across the street from this person, and they asking me about that. So, that's why...
Well, feel free to refer to me too because there's obviously some specific reasons.
Okay.
I can't give you general answers on a specific question.
Well, that's okay. Then I can stop while I mention it.
Sure.
Do we have any other council comment?
One quick one. On your drainage, we didn't quite give you an answer. What should he tell the guy? The gentleman that said that your drainage is rough or... We didn't answer you. You said we need to do it.
Well, it's something that...
What kind of price are you going to talk to?
You're probably looking at somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000.
I think before we talk about it and make a decision on it, we kind of need a little bit more information. I don't even think we can make a decision.
Yes, and I'm buying the money to fix our road.
But if it's right on the course of Michigan City's...
Well, that's my other question. Is it Michigan City or is it...
The road that came so far.
I just want to give Josh a answer in case he's back off.
That's where he's going to talk, in Michigan City and wherever.